At this time, I'll call the November Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is the invocation and the pledge. Commissioner Langley will do the invocation and Commissioner Revolt will do the pledge. Please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to come together one more time. And God, we seek your guidance and advice in everything that we say and we do that will be pleasing in thy sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Please face the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask that you put your phone on mute or either turn it completely off. The fine is $25. First item is conflict of interest. Is there a commissioner that needs to disclose a conflict? Okay, hearing none. The first item for presentation is our service award presentation. Dolores?
Agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on just one minute. Okay, on the approval of the agenda, before we get a motion, Dr. Cheeseman has asked, because they're having a board meet right now, to hold him until after the break. Chief Deputy Rose has asked to pull item number three. And, let's see. I'll make a motion that we pulled the Chaco County Fraud Investigation update. Is there a second? Okay, you do.
Second.
Did you second it? Okay, all right.
Well, let's see. Why would we want this debate on issue like this?
Well, I asked the manager if there was any kind of an update and he said no. So...
Well, then why would we? There's still no reason to pull this particular item because it involves fraud and possibly some of the county's money. So why are we trying to make this go away?
Well, we've talked about it before. I think this is at least the last two meetings. I mean, do you have an update?
No, I don't have an update.
Okay.
I wanted an update from the manager.
Well...
Sit down, but if he doesn't have a report.
He says, Brian, you don't. Okay. All right, you've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of pulling item number seven, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Chairman, could you also please pull the River East Workforce Development Board? The gentleman that applied quit his job this morning, so he's no longer available.
Okay, is that under consent?
Yes.
Number eight. Okay. Any other items? Any change in the agenda? All right, entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the changes noted. Motion to approve. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Now we're down to the service award presentation. Dolores, apologize to you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have three Beaufort County employees I'd like to acknowledge tonight for their service to Beaufort County. Unfortunately, they could not be here tonight. We have Brittany Joseph with the Health Department, who now has seven years in. Jewel Brown with Social Services, who has completed 10 years of service. And Dora Burgas with the Health Department, who has 20 years of service. So we'd like to congratulate the young.
Thank you very much. And will you express our appreciation to the three employees?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're aware, this coming Veterans Day, the National Association of Counties and the National Association of County Veteran Services Officers have invited all the counties to participate in what they're calling Operation Green Light. And that's to show support for veterans by lighting our buildings green from November the 7th to November 13th. Jenny Haddock, who is our Veteran Service Officer, is here tonight. And she has also brought a box of green lights. I think each of you have one at your desk. And she has one for those in the audience who may want to take one home with them as well. So feel free to see her or grab one as you go out the door. The Association of County Commissioners has put this out. I know you all have had some conversations about it. So our maintenance staff has been putting up green lights across the county. So you'll see some of our buildings lit up green. And there is a resolution that the board might consider for adoption on page six. And we'll take your pleasure on that.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the resolution in support of Operation Green Light for veterans. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And I'm going to do something at this point in time. I'd like to recognize all of the veterans that are in our midst tonight. If you would, please stand. Thank you very much for your service.
What were those dates again, for the 7th?
So it starts tonight and runs through the 13th. And, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to also, I'd be glad to read that resolution.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Thanks, sir. So Resolution Number 2022-110701, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Beaufort County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed services have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Beaufort County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a higher risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Beaufort County appreciates the sacrifices of our many United States military service and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County. Beaufort County hereby declares from November 7th through November 13th, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And therefore be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Beaufort County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence.
Thank you, Brian. We're down to public comments. And we have Ms. Loretta Younger. Thank you very much.
...to your board. I have lots of hats in the community. I do a lot of different things. And since my husband and I have been coming to listen to the things that you all talk about, the things that you decide upon, it amazes me all the knowledge and things that you have to do to do your job. However, when I see signs out that are negative towards people running for offices, I'm very discouraged because I was seriously considering running for somebody's seat up there. But I don't want to now because I'm not an unkind person. And it really bothers me to see negative things on signs, negative ads on TV. And people should be able to run on what they're going to do for their community, not what somebody else has done or is doing. And that's it.
Thank you very much. The next item is legislative update. And we're happy to have Representative Keith Kidwell. Representative Kidwell is going to update us on the airport happening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for having me here this evening, and staff for all of your hard work. Very good things happening at the Washington Warren Airport. We had, as you well know, got $20 million for the expansion of the facilities, runways, lighting, computer systems, and so on. That was kind of the old news, the good news. And new news is that we have contracted with an organization called Accelerate to bring drone industry into eastern North Carolina. Not just drone manufacturing, it's going to be everything from the concept, the education, expanding our STEM Center, working with our colleges across the state, literally. We've reached out to all the community colleges and the counties directly touching us. Elizabeth State, we've contacted ECU, NC State, Duke, I'm sorry?
Elizabeth City State.
Elizabeth City State. And all of them are going to be on board in helping to educate and work for the success of this project. The businesses we've contacted are excited. I invite all of you to join us on December 17th. We will have the first annual Drone and Air Show. It's an all-day event at the airfield. And this is going to display what's going to be happening at the airport. Potentially, we're looking at well over several hundred jobs in the next few years for Beaufort County. These are not going to be the minimum wage jobs. Some of these, we have young men up in Virginia flying drones with a drone pilot license. And I say young men, well, young people, 17, 18, 19 years old, the men I spoke to. A lot of women involved up there. But the pilots I saw was a couple of guys. $100 to $300 an hour to pilot these drones for things like insurance and real estate to inspect roofs, bridges, highways, pipelines, electrical systems, buildings, you name it. We'll be doing, as I said, the building, the test of concept, the application, and the proof on all of that here. The boat manufacturers, it turns out, didn't know this, but boat and drone manufacturing are very closely related in skills. So our current skill set that we have here is beneficial. All of the military bases in North Carolina already have preset air highways, if you will, that the FAA has designated. They go directly across our airport. So that allows us to fly drones or aircraft directly to any of the air bases in North Carolina. We also have it to Washington, DC, three bombing ranges. And they all, every company we've spoken with, and we're talking the likes of Northrop Grumman, Boeing, Dell, Fed Data, all of them, very excited about doing this. FAA, NOAA, DEA, FBI, they've all been down here. In fact, we are working currently to get the Secretary of Transportation Buttigieg to see if he can be down here on the 17th to join us in the celebration. We're going to have Congressman Greg Murphy, as well as some other dignitaries. I'd like to see all of our commissioners out there in support of the project, as well as our area business owners. There are sponsorship opportunities for the large companies that are not from our area that range into the $20,000 range. We've already had several to sign up for that, sponsoring the Drone Day. There are local businesses that can sponsor for a beginning rate of about $250 if anybody wants to join on that. So if we could send that out through the county as an announcement, I don't know if that would be appropriate, to have these businesses join in and be part of this. The vision is to have drones on the 17th fly in King Chicken, Bill's Hot Dogs, Boss Hog, and all of this, meals to the dignitaries at their respective stations to show people how well drones do work. And with that, we're talking about jobs. The best part about it, gentlemen, the cost to the taxpayers of Beaufort County and the state of North Carolina for this drone project, not the expansion of the airport, that was already a done deal. This drone project, the cost to the taxpayers is $0. I have to go ahead and do a mic drop right now if you'd like, but I don't want to break your mic. All right? So I stand for any questions that you may have in reference to that. Oh, I did leave out one little detail. Internet. Turns out they need internet, 5G, to fly drones. We are currently working with what was Southern Link Optima to run a, I don't know all these technical terms, guys, so bear with me, a 100-strand 5G fiber from the north and south to go directly across the airport, which means it will be open to service for people all throughout Beaufort County that are in proximity to that 5G system. That, potentially, we're looking at less than 10 months to have that up and running active across the airport. It will be a main internet beltway from Washington, DC to Huntsville, Alabama. So with that, I stand for questions.
All right, questions of Representative Kidwell.
Thank you, Keith.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. And we will try to be there on the 17th.
Please do.
Do we need to tell you in advance how we like our hot dogs?
Bullbills.
Okay, we're down to items for consent. Katie's already asked us to pull number eight. Is there any other?
I'd like to pull number four, number six, and number seven for more discussion.
Number four, number six, and number seven?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, need a motion to approve the items remaining.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of the items for consent with the changes, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right, Dr. Cheeseman is going to be with us after the break. Down to items for discussion from Public Works. Christina?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
As a reminder, starting in the fiscal year 2020 budget, the Board of Commissioners have allocated $575,000 each year to fund capital projects related to the county's buildings and its facilities. These projects were selected based upon the study and the information that was provided by EMG a few years ago, and also at the pleasure of the board. Throughout the year, the funds are entered into Munis and then they're tracked by the individual projects that are listed in the budget book. Currently, the projects are in various stages of design, procurement, and completion. Projects that have successfully been completed include the exterior window and storefront replacement at the courthouse, installation of new HVAC controls at the Tideland Building, as well as the installation of door access and card readers at the downtown campus buildings. Projects that are currently under contract and we're waiting for material delivery include the courthouse annex window replacement projects. We also have many projects that are currently in design and are close to being put out and advertised for bids, the largest of which would be the interior renovation of the courthouse and then also the Oakland Building interior renovation. If you recall, and if you follow the timeline, fiscal year 2020. So what was going on at that exact same time? That was COVID. So looking back, you know, COVID was in the middle of completing all of these projects, designing all of these projects, supply chain issues with the projects, as well as cost increases. One of the decisions that was made specifically because of cost increases and the impact of COVID was dealing with all of our roof projects. When you look at the multi-year list, the roofs jump out at you. And if you recall, many years ago, the board made the effort to go in to put money into replacing all of our roofs and sealing it before we go and do the interior renovations. But if you're looking at that total amount, 575 per year, and you add it up over the four years, a total of $641,000 has been allocated for roof replacement projects in the county buildings. So we're just getting to the point now of going back and sorting those projects because we had the roof for this building was designed, put out to bid, and cost impacts and things like that have hit. So now we're just going back based on the engineer's guidance to complete the design for the other roof projects and put those out to bid. So looking at all of these projects, and I'm not sure if you want me to list out individually what they are, or just a summary, in 2020, we had the courthouse exterior renovation as well as ADA improvements and some immediate repairs. We've completed the majority of those projects. Some of the ADA improvements that were listed in the EMG study, we haven't done it exactly as they suggested because it's just really tight when you're looking at our existing buildings in order to upgrade every single restroom in the courthouse to ADA standard. The 2021 capital projects included the courthouse exterior renovation, the courthouse interior, the Tideland HVAC controls, as well as the roof project. And then last year's capital projects included the Tideland outpatient roof, the Oakland Building interior improvements, as well as the courthouse window replacement, card access, and then some exterior repairs to the Maintenance Shop, as well as the Francisco Building. So again, the Francisco Building and the Maintenance Shop, we were waiting to put those out to bid until we get in the final numbers for the courthouse to make sure that we have enough funds for that. And then, of course, we have the projects that were included in this year's capital budget, which we have not started on completing those projects. Right now, we're trying to wrap up the other projects. So when I'm looking at the total amount of all of these, the projects that are outstanding and the projects that have been completed, based upon a dollar amount, right now, we're looking at about 35% expended and complete. If you factor in the roof project, or excuse me, the interior of the courthouse, that bumps us up to almost 50. And then once all of the roofs are complete, that's up around 75%. So again, these projects are time-consuming and we're working to get those completed. And that's my update that I have. And of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. I wish I could stand here and tell you that they were all completed and we're moving forward, but we all know the past four years have been a little bit extraordinary, so...
Do you have a list that you can email to us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
As you get things finished, how about taking a picture and sharing them at the next meeting?
Okay.
Some of these things are hard to, I mean, I'm not going to go up on the roof, but you will. You probably, somebody's going to go up there and look at it.
Been on every roof of every county building.
Right. Just take a picture and say, hey, this is, it'll look good.
I certainly will.
Have you got your drone's license? It sounds like we might have a drone.
No, sir, but if we can get drone pilots in the county, I have use for drones. And building the survey of the county buildings exactly for that roof inspections. But I'll have one other thing.
Charlie, are you a pilot? Are you a drone pilot?
I have some of the options.
Okay, there you go.
One of the uses in Public Works is inspecting elevated storage tanks of the water. So instead of sending climbers up to the top of the tanks frequently, they go in and they do the grid fly-around of the tanks.
Cut down on risk, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Other questions of Christina? Thank you very much.
Have you got a guest with you tonight? Kind of. He's got a couple of things that he helped get on the agenda, so I asked him to finish the last couple of tasks before I was finished with him. If there's any questions that you have that, I don't know, maybe he will know the answer to them. I'm not, I wasn't in here when things were getting pulled or rearranged from the agenda. So if you would, I guess, give me the order of what you need.
We pulled the DNF purchase. We pulled that.
And if I can on that, just to give you, I guess, a little bit of a heads up of what we were thinking. Chrysler was very up and down on whether they were even going to have a Charger line come out this year, whether it was for, you know, supply chain issues or the ship shortages or things like that. So the first vehicles that came along for order were the Durangos. And at that time, that was really the only thing that we knew that we could get our hands on this year. So that was why the order was made for what it was. Instead of 10 at the price point, we could get eight on those. But last week on Tuesday, the order bank came out for the Chargers. And for our fleet, it makes more sense for us to be more Charger-heavy than it would be the SUV-heavy. So we've decided to pull that. We're in the process now of getting the price list for the equipment to upgrade everything and the vehicles. And we're looking at right now with the price point at 36 instead of the 41 and a half that we could get nine vehicles instead of eight, which would put us in a better spot. So that's pretty much where we are and the reason that I pulled that agenda item for the vehicles.
The first item that we've got here is the communications recording system for the console interface server.
So that one, I'll actually, if I can, I also have that table for next month. There's a two-part process for that. One, there's the Carolina recordings piece that you have the purchase orders for. And then there's the other piece of it is another piece of hardware, but mainly the software that goes with it, that we need to get at least one more, if not two more, purchase orders. And I think we need a budget amendment done in the meantime for that to go. So that'll be up and ready for next month's meeting. And I didn't have enough time to get it done for this one.
Okay, how about the Motorola Solutions for Viper and VHF?
Okay, we're all good to go on that. That is, that was approved and discussed in the budget discussions. Consolates and the things that go with that, that's pretty much fancy term for saying it's a radio. So our communication system, pretty much when it comes down to the nuts and bolts of it, is one person on the radio talking to other people on the radio. So the consolates that are in the 911 Center Communications Office are the radio bank that is for a communication center. There is a schedule that's put out through Appconina and through the 911 Board and things like that that help, that help fund those issues that say, hey, you need to be replacing the radio and components and stuff like that on a certain schedule. Last year was the year that it was time for us to re-up with the consoles or the consolates. The only thing that we've added in addition to what we had before was going to be the ability to scan in and listen and communicate with the Washington Police Department and Fire Department through Viper that we haven't had before. And then also part of the discussions that I've had with this board has been about our ability to do text to 911. And these consolates that we're putting in there would put us in a more favorable spot to get as many of the features of that text to 911 as what we would want. Instead of sort of the rudimentary, you can text, but we not be able to pick up your location or the account information, things like that, that we would want to have. So that, we're ready to go with that purchase. The vendors are ready. It fits two, not three of the exceptions for the purchasing that we have. There will be sole source, it's state contract, and it fits with the other pieces that we already have in the puzzle, so for continuity operations as well. But if anybody has any questions, I'll try my best to field those.
Anyone have a question of Chief Rose?
Yeah, I have some questions. We're going to get eight radios for, in this purchase order.
Sir?
Eight handhelds.
No, these aren't handhelds.
What are these?
These are the consolates or the, sort of the big stack console rack radios that would go in like a computer rack. These aren't handhelds or mobile radios. These would be the, sort of the more beefy radio consoles that you actually have that a telecommunications operator.
So these are going in a building?
Yes, these are going to be in the 911 Communication Center.
And they're going to be, communicate with who and what?
Well, the 911 Center and Communications for the Sheriff's Office speaks to every first responder agency that operates in Beaufort County. So all fire, all EMS, all law, including local, state, and federal, if they are in the area. So I mean, this is, this is everything and anything that has to do with any emergency services, communications in Beaufort County.
I thought our Vipers could already do that.
Yeah, but this is the replacement, the radio replacement for the consoles that we have on the schedule of replacement that we have.
Oh, we're replacing obsolete equipment?
Correct.
Where is the equipment that's there going to go?
At that point, it gets surplused. We wipe it and then we surplus it.
I noticed...
I noticed there's $53,000 in here for the consolates. We got all-brand consulate, $39,000, and then there's another $14,000 for an all-brand consulate.
I mean, they're, if you could point out, all-band consulate, yeah, I mean, all of it is, goes, you'll get the one big price, and then you'll see the breakdown of each one. So you've got, each one of those will have a breakdown of what the console or consulate is and what's it covers. If it has more, you know, each one of these radios, just like if you were to buy them retail, would have capabilities on the amount of channels, information that they have, because in essence, they're computers nowadays. It's not like a radio.
It's a package deal.
It's a package deal, but you're also looking at like the difference. So if you have a question of why would one be 9875 and one 1388, it's gonna be evolving around the pieces of information and equipment that are gonna be carried on that, who we're gonna be talking to and where it was.
This is expandable into how many units?
That I have no idea. I don't know, I don't understand the meaning of the question.
Well, if we wanted to add more, more units to this.
Sure.
Can we expand this?
Yes.
All right.
For more money, of course, but yes.
There's only one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Randy?
On the mobile radios that are Viper-capable, do they have GPS location?
Yes.
Okay, so if a deputy has a handheld and is somewhere, we can't find him, you'll be able to track him?
Yeah, we have, we have the capabilities for GPS on our digital camera systems in our vehicles, so we can know where the car is. And then associated with the radio in our car, we've got the capability, if you see a deputy in full uniform, they'll, most of them will have a radio chip that's not connected to anything anymore, it's all wireless and Bluetooth, but through that device, then there's GPS. And then through our, also our body cameras that they'll have, which that's really the big hitter on that, is that that'll actually give you an officer down page, where if, you know, it'll, it'll pick up how I'm standing, and if I'm on the floor for a period of time, like, almost like firefighters would have on their rigs, then a signal would go out that there's probably something wrong.
Good.
Ed?
Chief, this is already budgeted, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Let me ask one more question.
Okay.
What is the delivery on this?
I wish I could tell you that. The best guesses that we're getting for just about anything that we're getting, that we're ordering and getting purchase orders in, is that it was within 30 to 60 days at the best, and 60 to 90 days is the worst anybody's given. But I would also venture to guess and say that, just in experience with how things go now, is that anything that we're ordering right now, we're gonna be fortunate to get finished and completed, the project, before the end of June.
That bad?
I'd say that's almost becoming the new normal. That's why we're trying to do everything that we can, especially on the big-ticket items, to make sure that we're completely finished with our part, and are waiting on the first part of the year, so we're waiting for delivery on the next part.
Other questions?
When is this contract up, Chief?
Sir?
When is this contract up?
For?
Since you got a long wait, was it under contract?
Well, it, well, it's the contract under the purchasing agreements. So I mean, you go, you get, you look at your stuff, you get a bid sheet, you know, we request information for a purchase order, and then really, as soon as the purchase order's approved, which is what we're asking for today, that's when it becomes like a check being signed.
The reason I ask is you got such a delay in getting your shipment in, why did you wait till now to order it? That's where I was headed.
It's been, it's been, I guess, interesting, you know, as far as timing goes, really the last handful of months. I don't think any time that you're, you're at Sheriff's Office and months going into a transition and things are gonna be different, and quite frankly, I mean, we, as a command group, including the sheriff himself, we decided to put off things that we thought that we can put off, because the next sheriff might decide to go in another direction. You know, this was not one of those things that we were doing, it just also took a, really a couple of attempts to get all of the pieces together. I don't like to bring anything before this group as commissioners until it's really completed on our end, and it's been sort of a challenge to get those things done the last couple of months.
And I'm gonna vote for it, but the problem I have is, is we don't know what's gonna happen.
Correct.
I mean, if we ordered it six months ago, or three months ago, you had these supplies in, and make sure everything was working good, working order, that's my only concern. And like I told you, when your budget come in, I'm voting for it.
It's also concerning to me, always has been. You know, there are certain things that really, that were sort of out of our control on the timing of that, with the companies that we're dealing with, and, you know, with the equipment that we're dealing with, you know, a lot of people have a lot of bad things to say about Motorola, but right now, in worldwide communications, there's not a, there's not a better piece of equipment that you can buy. And when it comes to me, you know, my, my point of emphasis that I have on it is when the men and women of the Sheriff's Office, when they press the button to talk, I want somebody to be able to hear. And when they let go, I want them to be able to hear what's being said on the other end, and that's Motorola right now. If it wasn't, I'd say it, but Motorola is the answer right now.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the purchase order being approved, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, six is on page 29. Who?
Okay. The reason that I brought this up is for concern. We found page 29, actually. 29 has to do with, oh, giving, giving these, I think this should be announced, I think the public should know this, this is the reason that I brought this up, giving one Springfield Armory 9mm pistol and one gold sheriff badge to the retiring sheriff, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then the commissioner giving one gold lieutenant badge and one Smith &amp; Wesson 9mm to the retiring Lieutenant Van Landingham.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, I think these are, these are important events, when someone retires and we're giving, we're giving him a pistol and a badge, the public should know about it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we've got a motion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, the next item is on page 30, and that's the surplus of the Dodge Charger.
Well, yeah, this is just for discussion, I'm observing that we're talking about buying more Dodge Chargers while we're surplusing Dodge Chargers, and I'm gonna bring this up every time something comes up about automobile replacement, because I think that we are turning these cars loose with too few miles on them, we can get more miles out of them. Precision manufacturing, the way things are done with the miller and the manufacturing processes today, cars will last, you can get more miles on them. And if we're not getting the miles on them, and we need to be looking at why we're not getting the miles on them, so I bring this up in light of what was just discussed, that we're surplusing one Dodge Charger with 159,000 miles on it, and we're buying nine new ones, when we just bought within the last six months, what, eight?
Yes.
How long ago was it we bought?
It's been, the last vehicles that we got in were the Dodge Durangos, that you call minivans, and that's been probably almost a good calendar year since they've been bought, and a good six and a half months that they've been on the road.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, we're having a lot of cars delivered, a lot of cars going to the Sheriff's Department, and we're not getting our money's worth out of them. We need to bring this up, talk about this during the budget, the commissioners need to come up with a policy of you can't surplus a car until it has so many miles, unless you bring something in that justifies it.
Commissioner Reddick?
There is, and we do this at the budget meeting, but there are software packages out there that'll take, manage your fleet and tell you when to replace vehicles, because it's more than just mileage. It's age, resale value, and the price of the new vehicles that you replace them with. So there's a lot more to it than just mileage, and I would suggest maybe at the budget meeting, we see about investing in that.
Commissioner Booth?
Well, the thing, I want Mr. Richardson to understand, is he has just 159,000 miles on these cars, but that's not actual, that's actual miles, but some of these cars are sitting there either for hours at the time, and that's, I mean, if y'all was out looking for a child or something, or have a murder, those cars are sitting there running, so that's another thing you had to take in consideration, is because they got 150, it's staying like the low mileage, but there's a lot of hours on the motor and of the vehicle.
Commissioner Langley?
Well, the other thing that I wanna add to that is, these cars are not driven like your cars that are in your yard. These cars take some serious abuse. I mean, they do, they do a lot of driving in high-stress situations, and, I mean, when you can get out of these things, you need to walk away from them, and that's really and truly what, what you should focus on. I mean, it's not like the Charger, you go out to the Dodge place and buy, and you, and you keep it and drive it for 159,000 miles, oh, no, that's, that's not the same. These, these vehicles have been pushed, and so therefore, if you got them working where you can get something back out of them, it's time to let them go.
Okay, I need a motion.
Chairman, let me, that make one more statement. I'll disagree with anything that these commissioners have said, but what I'm saying is, we are not applying any management theory to replacing these cars, and we need to be doing that. We need more and better management, it will save us a lot of money.
Mr. Chairman, if I may on that.
You sure?
I agree that the board has not played an active part in the replacement schedule of the vehicles, but there is strategy, and there is a plan involved. Every year, the discussions are had between us and the county staff, and for years, I can't, it's probably going on eight or nine years now. We've been trying on our end to get to a point where there is actually a on-paper schedule and plan that you can see, and in that way, there won't be any spikes of money when it comes to the budget time, but we hadn't been able to get that through. And I wanna say that those conversations have been about really all the vehicles in the county fleet, not just the vehicles in the fleet of the Sheriff's Office. I will speak on the, on the fleet that we have at the Sheriff's Office, is that we spend a, really a lot of our time on trying to maintain and keep the fleet in as, as high of a quality state as we can, and that's not just mechanically, or make sure the engine and transmission is sound, that's making sure that the look is right. I mean, we do, we spend a lot of time on the cosmetic looks, because the vehicle that goes along with the deputy is a huge part of the command presence that a deputy brings when they go to the scene. And, and, you know, whether that's a psychological myth or not, we know for a fact that there, that that is a piece of the puzzle, that if you don't look right when you get up to the scene, then people aren't gonna give you as much credence as if you do look the part. And when we show up in a sharp vehicle, with a sharp-looking deputy in a sharp uniform, then, then even if the first things out of their mouth are wrong, they're gonna get the first 30 or 45 seconds of people's attention when they get there. And then we work on the training part to make sure that what we do and what we say is correct as well. So a lot of time and effort and energy and money is spent to make sure that every piece of the puzzle, being a deputy sheriff in Beaufort County, is filled, and we take pride, and we take that as a, as, as part of our, our craft and part of our work. I agree with everything that the commissioner said about our fleet, and really, to hit on your point, Commissioner Booth, it's almost like we need to be looking at our machines like they look at boats or heavy equipment, they almost need to be looked at as far as hours and not miles. The amount of electronics and the components that we have in the vehicles, that's one of the big reasons why we can't cut the car off, is that we've got all these computers and all these programs running, and it would drain the battery, and it would drain the power of it, to the point that if there was an emergency situation that we had to get out of, the car might not start. So there are plenty of times and situations where somebody who doesn't quite know the deal sees a car and a deputy is not in it, but the car's running. The reason is, is that when the car's running, you know it's running, but if you cut it off, you might not, you might not know if you're gonna be able to cut it on again, you know, and the higher those miles get, and the more age gets on the cars, the less reliable that they're gonna be, which makes it even more so that we've got to turn those cars over in our fleet. But I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to say that.
Okay, we get, we did get a motion, did we, Katie? Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and surplus in the car.
All right. Thank you.
Can I take one more?
Yes.
Okay, so, I wanted to take the opportunity, while I had it, to say thank you to the board, all the members of the board. I've been able to talk to a few of you individually, and I'll try to hit everybody up, but I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank the county staff that I deal with the most, so Katie and Mr. Francisco, Brian and Anita. It's been an honor and a privilege. I don't know what's gonna happen moving forward. I plan on staying at the Sheriff's Office, but I don't know what capacity that's gonna be, completely up to the next sheriff coming in. We've got a good product here at Beaufort County, and it's something to be proud of. And I just wanted to take that opportunity while I had it to say thank you, and to say thank you to the folks that are gonna be watching this from the office, that, you know, we have, our goal is to be one of the best Sheriff's Offices in the state, and I think we are. You know, the men and women that work every day, they come to work and they do the job and they do it well, and it's something to be proud of. I know during politics and during runs and campaigns and things like that, things that get said for pure political reasons, and it's hard to stay out of that fray, even if you are a deputy sheriff, but they've done a good job of working through that, and I'm proud of all of them. And once again, I thank you all for the opportunity, and, you know, we'll see, we'll see what happens. We're in, we're in good shape, and I think we're gonna be in good shape, you know, moving into December and going into next year, there's gonna be more tussles and more trials and more tribulations, but I say that about government in general. If, for the people who are at home and they're expecting their government to work and work well, I would be more worried about a government that always gets along and never argues than one that doesn't argue and doesn't argue publicly. I'd be more afraid of the corruption and things like that that could go along with it, if it seems like everybody is friendly and friends all of the time, so, you know, that's really all I have, but thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, Charlie. And Kelly, thank you for your service. Are you on the job now, Craven County?
Yeah, yes, sir, I started last month with, under Sheriff Hughes, so, under their special operations bureau, so kind of doing what I was doing here in Beaufort, and getting up their chromestoppers program and everything, so I'll be CLWIT, just new look, green pants, and everything, so I miss y'all, you know, I hope to be back one year, but, you know, at the time, it felt like the best move for me, so, but I just, I can everything that Chief Deputy said, so, but I said, what y'all say.
Can you, can you give us a ticket in Beaufort County?
No.
You can't.
Hey, look, give me a ticket and a photo.
All right, thank both of you for your service. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna put Chief Deputy on notice that we'll have it out tomorrow, 'cause he's got me a little overclamped right here before my presentation, but I'll do the best I can. So I would like to give you an update on the sales tax distributions, and remember, we're three months behind, so the funds that we'll be receiving this month of November are for the August sales, and you have your hand out there. For August, we'll be receiving $1,142,000, which is almost exactly what we received last month, and that is at 13.6% from what we received for the same month last year. So when we got that news from the association on the numbers, a little surprised by that, because if you look at the graph, historically, we would expect a little slip down for the August sales compared to last month, but like I said, almost exactly the same distribution there, so our sales tax remain high, really robust sales there. Don't know when that's gonna change, just don't know, but we'll continue to ride that, ride that wave as long as we can, obviously. Want to draw your attention to the small box in the top right-hand corner. This is where we show the, the two distributions that we have received for this new fiscal year. We annualize that number, assuming if we receive that same average amount for the next 10 months, for a total of 12 months, then that number comes out to be 13.7 million. We budgeted the 12.586 million, so we're running at a current surplus of $1.1 million. And I say that to say, I wanna start telling you, early on, it's November, if this continues, we will owe the schools more money for restricted sales tax for capital, if it continues. Now, if they slide, if the sales tax numbers go down, we will not, but... we will not. But we'll continue to monitor this. We've always looked at it. We'll look at it every month. And speaking of which, the sales tax, it's been of much debate the last couple of months. I did want to follow up and try to wrap that up with a bow on top, because the auditor has, has responded back to Commissioner Richardson, and I noticed that he didn't have it under his agenda item. So I wanted to share the information with the full board.
The auditor has not responded to me as she promised.
I have an email here dated Friday, October the 28th, that was sent to Commissioner Richardson in response concerning the sales tax question that he had. And it reads, "Mr. Richardson, sorry it took me a while to get back with you, but I wanted to gather enough information from prior years to be able to show you the trends over the past five years. Please review the attached spreadsheet. You will notice that for 2018 through 2021, the calculation of the required sales tax to be used for school capital exceeded the amounts paid to the schools for capital contributions and debt payments. However, in fiscal year 2122, the sales tax distributions increased more than anticipated, especially in the last few months of the year. Coupled with that, coupled that with the fact that the debt payments are going down as the loans are getting closer to maturity, and with revenue going up and expenditures going down, it is creating a situation where more funds are restricted for schools for capital purposes. We have reviewed Anita's calculation and have provided our own calculation for you to see for the prior four years in addition to the current year. She has calculated this as required by the standards and has recorded it correctly as restricted fund balance at June 30th, 2022. When this money is paid out in fiscal year 2223, it will come out of this restricted fund balance reserve. I have verified that this calculation is correct, and it is presented correctly in the county's records. I hope this clarifies your question. Thanks, Brandy Turville, CPA for Thompson, Price, Scott &amp; Adams. And that's all I have for my finance presentation. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to get back to item that was pulled. We have one more, and that's the cooperative extension tractor purchase, and that's on page 18. So.
Yeah. I pulled this for a reason. I don't have that front of me right now. But we started off with something like a $60,000 budget appropriation.
$64,000.
Now, all of a sudden, we're up to like $140,000, and, and private money has been raised to go with the public money. And this is a farm tractor, and, and we're in the farming business, planting crops for people. You know, on and on this thing goes. It becomes a bigger disaster the longer it goes on. So I think maybe at our next meeting, that we need to have the soil people back in here, or ASC, or whoever's doing this, if they're here tonight, they need to come up and explain to us why we're in the farming business, and why we've gone from $70,000, $64,000, up to like $140,000 or $150,000.
The tractor, as I came to you and asked for a replacement of the tractor we had, was for $64,000, as was stated in the budget. We got that money. I had said that night, I believe, that I had $10,000 more dollars that was going to go along with that. Now, the tractor that we replaced is very small, and it was not going to do everything that we wanted it to do, especially given the opportunity that the university put before me to match some of that money, so that I could purchase a larger tractor that would be, that would cover everything that we wanted to do. Running the, the planter, the sprayer, everything that we have, we can now do with one tractor. So with the $64,000 that you appropriated, and the $10,000 that I raised through Tri-County Telephone Foundation, and then the donation through the university, with another researcher, by the way, who was also, this will be a continually shared piece of equipment that extends the investment to do even more work that's going on here in the county. And that's why the number, as you mentioned, that has, has elevated is because we originally did not know how to go about purchasing this tractor. It made sense for us to purchase the tractor from one entity instead of two. In other words, the university could send money to John Deere and pay for their part. The county could send their part, but who owns the tractor? Who's in control of scheduling maintenance and things of that nature? It made sense then, and the university agreed to send, for them to send their money here to us. Talking with the county manager and finance officer, we learned that that was acceptable to do. The university, and the county would then pay the total amount for the tractor. The university will reimburse their share of it. And of course, there's some tax money in there too that we get back, correct? So the total cost of tractor won't be the $140, some, we will get some of that tax money back, and maybe $10,000 or something. So that explain, does that give you any?
Not really, because we started off with, with a small project, and it wound up as a big project of doing something we shouldn't have been doing to begin with. And now we've doubled what we were supposed to be doing. So now we're doing two times what we're doing. But I understand this tractor is used in several different counties.
Yes. It, it can go to, we have a large, as I explained at the budget or the meeting before when we discussed this, we will take this piece of equipment as we perform or put on this large field day. And it moves around within four counties. And yes, we have historically taken what the equipment we have and go over to another county to implement the, the field day, the trials, the things that we put in, the demonstration plots. That's not unusual to do. So we've done that for some time.
Well, I still seriously question whether Beaufort County should be in farming business or not.
And we're not, yeah, so we're not in the farming business. As I explained again that, that night, and it's been taken out of context, the work that we do with this piece of equipment is designed to implement, in, in, in what you have spoken about in other platforms, the variety trials and hybrid trials that we do. We put those in to, to give every company a chance to put their hybrids and their genetics, I'll say it that way, into a neutral situation to see whose yields the best, to look at the different traits of the different genetics that are offered. When a company like Pioneer or Decal or others that you've alluded to do the same thing, it's not really the same thing. What they're doing is showcasing their own genetics. They put their seven, eight, 10 hybrids out there in the corn plot, for instance. And that, then they harvest that data and they show it. They send a nice little publication out to the growers highlighting all of the different aspects of the varieties that they are marketing. What makes ours different and from what a company does is we are in place, and our whole drive, our whole effort, as far as the university goes, is to provide the growers with research-based, unbiased information. I'm not trying to sell them anything. I'm trying to give them the most, the best information that they can get, so that they can make a solid decision about what genetics they're going to plant on their farm the next year. There's a big difference. We also take that further, the way we implement that trial is done so that we can statistically analyze that data to a high level to ascertain what differences truly are in place and what is maybe connected or caused by some other variable that is not controlled. But these, these experiments are highly controlled, planted with the same planter, the same day, the same fertilizer. Everything's treated the same. So again, everything's on a level playing field. And that is drastically different than what the companies provide to, to the growers. So they're trying to market their products. We're just trying to give some information to our growers. A 30 bushel difference, I harvested my corn trial not long ago, and I had a probably 30 bushel difference from the highest yields to the lowest yields. You take that 30 bushels, and a grower takes that information and chooses correctly, he's, he's made 30 bushels over what he wouldn't have done had he chosen the lesser yielding varieties. And you, 100 bushel, I'm sorry, 100 acre farmer, 30 bushels difference at $7 a bushel, that's $21,000 on 100 acres difference in profit that that grower's going to make. You scale that up to 500 acres, you're looking at $105,000. A lot of our growers are growing thousands of acres of corn. We were number two producer in the state last year of corn, number two in soybeans, 60,000 acres of soybeans, 40,000, 47,000 in corn. You multiply those numbers out, it's, it's many, many millions of dollars. And that's what we bring to the table with the work that we're doing. It's not the only thing we do, but this is a part of what we do with this equipment. And it is very regional in scope, as we have growers who are farming in other counties, and their other counties have growers that are coming into our area farming. And so this information is distributed quite widely. Was there a question over here?
Uh, it is.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank you. You didn't come up and answer that other $64,000.
[laughing]
I want you to thank the people, I want you to thank the people that made the donation, that the county wouldn't have to do it. And even if we did have to do it, agriculture is one of the largest tax bases in this county. And I think it's, it's money well-spent, and I'm appreciative that you had, that you had the ability to raise the other funds to get the complete operation that you needed.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it does take a lot of money to do what we're doing. But again, a small investment, when you look at $120 million, I think in 2021 is what our crops sold for in this county. Those dollars turn over again and again and again in Beaufort County. So supporting these farmers, helping them to be as productive as they can be, is a good thing for all of us. Any other questions?
All right, go ahead, Randy.
Yeah, you know, I've seen this in action. I'm a big fan. I'm telling everybody they ought to go check this out, because this really is something. I will not stand in the way of agriculture. So I'm voting for this. But I, one question, I guess you're going to salvage, I mean, sell the other tractor?
Yeah, at one time, we talked about surplusing it, and there was some interest from another county, possibly. We, we've got to iron that out. But right now, we've done nothing with the old tractor. I mean, it's, it's still.
You'll have time.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, I, I think the reason the university is behind it and gave the money is the fact that it's used in four counties. And they look at the Blacklands Farm Manager Group as being the leading group in the state of North Carolina. The other thing is, when you buy something like this, on the business, in the business, you look at it on a 20-year AM or 25-year AM. And if it's a 20-year AM, it's a cost of $7,000 a year. Who's our largest taxpayer? What do they do? What do they produce?
Agriculture, corn, soybeans, wheat, cotton.
Yeah.
Tobacco.
I make a motion, we approve it. Is there a second? All right, we got a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Let the public see it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the managers' report, the appointment to fill the unexpired term of the register of deeds. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you'll recall, September the 7th, Ms. Jennifer Whitehurst announced that she intended to retire from her position as the county register of deeds effective December 31. As you also know, her term runs until November 30th of '24. So this is causing a mid-year, midterm vacancy in the office. You have a copy of North Carolina General Statute 161-5, which addresses how the board of commissioners is to fill that vacancy. At a regular meeting on October the 3rd, the board unanimously voted to notify the Beaufort County Republican Party and begin the 30-day period. There's a 30-day tolling period in which they have, you have to notify them and give them opportunity to make a recommendation. Notice was emailed the next day, the next morning, and acknowledged by the party on the same day. The Beaufort County Republican Executive Committee held a special election on November the 11th to determine the recommended appointee to fill the unexpired term. And we received notice of that appointee on October the 12th. Attached, you have a copy of the notification from the Beaufort County Republican Party that Carolyn L. Garrus was selected as the recommended appointee to fill the unexpired term of the register of deeds. So in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 161-5, it's our recommendation that you appoint the nominee of the Beaufort County Republican Party, Carolyn L. Garrus, to fill the unexpired term of Jennifer Whitehurst, Beaufort County Register of Deeds, effective January 1 of 2023. You have the attachments included with this is North Carolina General Statute 161-5, and the notification from the Beaufort County Republican Party for their appointee. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but this is pretty much your, your decision.
Okay. Entertained a motion to accept the recommendation.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have some concerns about this particular appointment. For one thing, there's been a misinterpretation of the general statute. The general statute, I'll, I'll read my statement and then comment. The General Statute 161-5 applies to this appointment. I take no issue with the filling of any partisan seat by a like partisan. I take issue with the interpretation of the statute that commissioners are required to accept the first designee of the relevant political party regardless of qualifications. Nothing in this statute directs that commissioners are required to abandon their fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Beaufort County. And I'll comment to that. And that is to, to install a competent person who can do the job that we have confidence in, in going on with my reading. If the intent of the statute were that the first designee be appointed without question, there would be no need for the statute. The relevant political party would directly, without consultation with county commissioners, install their designee. The statute clearly directs that the Board of County Commissioners, quote, "The Board of County Commissioners shall consult with the county executive committee," end quote. It says consult, not notify, not take the recommendation of. It says consult. Therefore, there is opportunity for commissioners to not violate our fiduciary responsibility. Further, the word consult would not have been used. Instead, the word notify would have been used if this were an absolute, you've got to take the first person that's put up. I recommend that we not accept the apparent nominee of the party by vote, that we further vote, that we, we buy another vote immediately after this vote, request that the executive committee send us a more qualified applicant. Now, one of the things that I need to say with this, people will tell me, lawyers lining up, tell me that I don't have a choice but to vote for this. If I was elected to a public office and I'm told that I have, I have no choice but to vote for something, that's my first clue that there is something terribly wrong. No law, no legislature can require any individual to march in lockstep and violate his judgment and his, what he thinks is right. And I refuse to be put in that position, because I know that the people in Beaufort County elected me to make sure that they have a competent, qualified register of deeds, and any other position in the county as far as that goes. So to mandate that you have to take the first one that's put up is a problem. Several years ago, we did have a problem in Beaufort County, where a person was put into the position of register of deeds, and I'm not sure, I don't know the details, but they came out rather quickly when the sheriff went in and arrested them, because they weren't qualified in a lot of different ways. So that is simple proof that I'm not required to do what I'm told. And this candidate, in my opinion, is not qualified for a variety of reasons, not just for one, for a variety of reasons. And I want this board to consider how to go about getting someone into this position that we can rely on and depend on, and that, that doesn't have some ethical issues. And I'll define one of those ethical issues, because I may not get a chance to say it again. The ethical issue is, when Jennifer Whitehurst made known to the party chairman that she was retiring at the end of the year, the party chairman, and I was in the executive committee meeting, went through an executive committee meeting with that job in her pocket, without telling the people on the executive committee who would be making the decision. She held that until she had lined it up for herself. And then she sprung it by email on the executive committee. So there's serious problems here. And with the people understanding what reliability is and what ethics are. And so I hope we can find a way to resolve this problem tonight. Other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Go ahead.
I see it slightly different than Hood. I don't want to cast any aspersions against Mrs. Garrus. I will say this, I am a member of the GOP Executive Committee. I thought it lacked somewhat, some transparency. I thought it lacked somewhat some transparency in getting notification out to all Republicans of Beaufort County to find out who was the most qualified for the job. I would like, and I'm not, and Ms. Garrus may be the perfect person, but I think we have time and I think we should take that time to see if, and express to all the Republicans in Beaufort County. I mentioned this in the last executive committee meeting where she was selected. This is, I'm just not coming up with this now. And I've said it before the board, we need to slow this down. The way I read the general statute, it's 30 days. It's 30 days, uh.
After the vacancy.
After the vacancy. We have to do something. And the notification has already been done. We're cool. Everything's golden there. However, having said all that, we do have time. The Republican Party has rushed us through. Now, we're following suit and rushing this through. I'm just saying, slow it down. Let's get some transparency out there. Let's send a notification to all Republicans of Beaufort County. I have a lot of constituents angry about this and I'd like to, to put this to bed on a happy note. So, I mean, if you're forcing me to vote tonight, I'm going to abstain. I'm not going to vote against it. I'm not going to vote for it. But I would like to, to, to slow this down. I'd like for you guys to think, what can we do to slow this down? Amend the, uh, amend the, uh, motion to, uh, showcase that if at all possible. And I'm done.
If nobody else has anything, I'd like one more.
I got one. Yeah, I think it's always convenient when you read the law and you leave out half of it. And I think it's also important to note that this, that the consult part of this is just one piece of it. The other piece of it is that it says after consulting with the County Executive Committee, then the Board of Commissioners shall appoint the person that that executive committee nominates. Uh, and I think it's also interesting that we've gotten a letter today from the Chief Counsel for the North Carolina Republican Party of which all of this, all of this is taking place under that, that group that expressly says that our duty is to accept the nominee from the executive committee and appoint that person. Uh, so I don't know what more expertise you could have than that. I think it's, I think we're just, your, your definition of somebody's capabilities and expertise are something that's just between your two ears. Okay? Whether it agrees with anybody else just makes no difference for you.
Well, the, the word consult is important in there because if we had no choice, the word consult will not be in there. Consult is a two-way street. I'm going to consult with you. I want to hear what you have to say and you're going to hear what I have to say and we're going back and forth and we will come to some kind of reasonable agreement before it's over with. That's why the word consult is in there, to keep us, to make sure that we get the best appointee that we can get to the, uh, to the position. And the stand, Commissioner Dethridge is correct, and that is we have until sometime in January to actually make a final decision. I don't want, by any stretch, want to wait that long, but time is not on our back with this thing. We are still entirely inside the law and I would make a motion that we table this issue while we send it back for another candidate.
Did you have any other comments?
Yeah, I, I think that once we get, once we've notified them that the 30 days clock starts ticking, then we're done. You've got the 30 days and that's it.
Oh, no, no, no.
So if you keep saying, no, 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 you don't know.
Read the statute. I do know. I read, I understand English. What do you understand?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, okay, you got one, one more.
Yeah, my opinion on this is, and, uh, my opinion on this is very simple. I, I agree that there's a consultation process and, and I think we're still in that right now. I think, and then there's a you shall appoint process, but that process has a time factor. And right now we're rushing and forgetting the time factor. Now, I, it's going to come to a point where it's going to be you shall do this and at that point I will vote. And it may be that it isn't, Ms. Garrus, and, and that will be fine, but that will be, in my opinion, best when we experience a longer time of consultation. That's, that's the way I see it. I mean, I'm just a commissioner, I'm not a lawyer. I, I understand the shall, I understand the consult, and I understand the time. And I think there's a way we can work this out in there with the time factor and I think we could all be satisfied.
Okay.
And I, and I would like to second Hood's table. And now, of course, you, you have a motion on the floor, that's, that's your pleasure.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm getting ready to comment. You guys finished? You guys finished?
My table has to be voted on first.
Okay, the motion table has to be voted on first. Good.
Okay. Under, I, I, I think the public deserves to know exactly the process. Uh, the release went out and it was published in the Washington Daily News on the 28th. And in the release, it stated where you could apply, which was the, uh, NC GOP website. We had the meeting, we had 25 executive committee members there. There was no nominations from the floor. None, zero. And we had two candidates and we had an observer from another county to observe and we went through the process. And the person selected by the Republican Executive Committee was Carolyn Garrus. And as commissioners, it's our responsibility to accept that from the Republican Executive Committee. If it was coming from the Democratic Party, then I think, I think this group would accept that. It's not our choice. The, the register of deeds is a likely position, is it not?
Yeah.
The people vote, so. I mean, it's been done and we have a recommendation and we also have a table. So we're going to take, is there anything else?
I want to question this. A rub. I, I understand wholeheartedly, I've done it for 20 years. I understand the difference in shall and may. This did say shall, and I'm going to vote with the recommendation that was sent to me. But I also, I'm, I'm also going to vote with some reservations because the, the things that I hear in the community, I can't control, I wasn't there. I'm not a Republican, I'm a Democrat. And, uh, if the things that I hear in the street were true and it was a Democrat, I wouldn't vote. But I wasn't there and I don't know what happened. Only thing I hear is what's been told and all of this. But I also promised that I, when I took this, this position, that I was uphold the law. And the law firmly states that we shall, and I'm one of the products that came here on this, we shall. And at the time that I came, I consulted with both parties. I knew I had his vote. I knew Port Black had his. I knew I had Dr. Caden's vote, but I had to talk to Earl Tettleton, Chris Caden, Hood Richardson. And the thing about it is Hood lied to me. He was going to vote for me. Then, then he got up and said, I knew you had it. But, but I'm, but I'm saying, but I'm saying that I don't know what happened. That's, that's something that y'all are going to have to decide. But, but I'm going to, I'm going to respect the law.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor to, you know, I, I, I'm not sure exactly what the infight is within the Republican Party and my, my thoughts are, are this. The word shall is a binding word. There's nothing you can do about it. But at the same token, I don't have a problem with waiting till the December meeting to, to vote. That doesn't, that doesn't faze me a lot. I don't think it will make a whole lot of difference because I, I, I really feel that some stuff needs to be cleaned up and we need to, I mean, when push comes to shove, December, what's, what's I mean, the December 3rd, is it December 3rd we meet? Whoever it is, December the 3rd, I'm voting in the affirmative. But I'm just saying, let's clean up all the mess. Let's clean up the mess. Let's, let's police it up and, and in December, let's just do what's required. That's, that's all I'm asking. I, I think that is the, the best way. And I, and I'm, I'm really offended and Ms. Younger said it, said it best. It's time for us to stop being so ugly. I mean, this is, this is, this is just unreal. And, and in 2000, when I first became a commissioner, it was not this way. It was not this way. How in the world have we gotten to this place where we are right now? Our whole country is based on whether you're blue or whether you're red. We don't even care about whether somebody's a good person or a bad person. We just go into attack mode and it's time for us to change. It is time for us to change and I'm done. Okay, we got a motion on the floor to table. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Randy.
Yeah, uh, I was at the executive meeting, I'm not on the board, but I sat and just watched and it was, um, you know, each candidate had three minutes and, uh, I, I could make no decision from either a candidate. They both seemed like very nice people. And so, uh, then tonight we were given this, which says there's going to be lawsuits all over the place if we don't do what we're supposed to do. And I, I guess the best quote is from Mr. Richardson is, which is, why are we here? If, if, you know, why are we even bothering, just let it happen? And really the only thing we do is set the salary and, and so that's our, that's our job. But if it makes things cool down and lets things get to a better, even keel in December, let's, let's put it off a month and, and, uh, and then maybe there'll be some other information because I was just given this tonight. I mean, so that's, that's the way I feel about it.
Boy, I, I think the thing you got to remember is the commissioners have no jurisdiction over the executive committee, so the executive committee would, would have to make a.
If they, if they turn the same name back in, then I'm going to vote for it.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, me too. If they do it, I'm going to vote.
But at least you're putting the onus on the executive, the, the Beaufort County GOP Executive Committee to do their part in the consultation. Now, we, we, we are playing our part in the role of consultation where we are saying, please make it more transparent, please put it back out there, put it back up, make it open, do it again, then bring it to us.
Well, you talk about transparency. You brag about your website having 300,000 hits. You said you had.
I didn't know you said that.
Yes, you did.
No.
You have 300,000 hits.
360,000 views per week. That's a lot more than a hit.
Okay, well.
Hit is old talk.
You said you got, you got the information before the Washington, or at the same time the Washington Daily News, you put it out there then ahead of the Washington.
I didn't, I didn't get an advert, advertisement to put it up and to when it was going to be done. I forgot that.
If you go back to the last meeting, you said that you got it before it was.
I got the notification and that's all I got.
At the same time, Washington Daily News.
That's all I got.
Well, you talk about transparency. I mean, it's transparency was, was there as it went through the party. You guys are just upset because your nominee didn't win. That's it in a nutshell.
That's an out of question of, of, of my person or anybody else's person. It might be six other people come forward, who knows? And that, is that going to be my nominee?
Well, I mean, it was advertised, the executive committee knew it, knew it, and there was no nominations from the floor. None, zero.
All right, I'm just telling you, I've talked to a lot of people and they said I would have liked to have known.
Not a single person has called me. You, you guys always come up with these names, people that's communicated to you, but I'm assuming it's on that side of the party.
What's up?
It's on that side of the party.
What party is that? The party are you talking about?
Yeah, the, the radical conservative group.
Oh, the MAGA, the MAGA crowd.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Trumpers. Okay, we got it, we got it. Has anybody else got anything to say before we vote on the table? Okay, all those in favor of tabling it, raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed? All right, that's table.
Uh, I would like for the Republican GOP to send something to me and I would be more glad to put it up, whether it's paid or not.
I don't think you have to. We gave him the 30-day notice.
Well, I just, I just request it, that's all.
No, whatever notice is the.
I'm just, I, I have to get something.
You had decided to proceed well.
There has to be definitive information in there. I'm just going to throw a bunch of stuff up there. No, I don't do that.
Okay.
I expect definitive information.
Item number two, we'll skip over. We're down to item number three. Uh, Brian, the request for an audit by the Register of Deeds. 254.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Apologize, took me a minute to get there. Um, the, um, Register of Deeds, Jennifer Whitehurst has announced her retirement, as you know, and she's requested that the county perform an audit of her office financials prior to her retirement. Um, the finance officer has reached out to, um, our auditing firm to determine exactly what that cost might be. Um, it's roughly an estimate of $10,000. So what we've recommended to you is, is pulling $10,000 out of contingency, putting it into professional services line item and giving us the opportunity to engage a auditing firm that would go in, um, both for Ms. Whitehurst's sake, she wants to make sure that there aren't any questions, uh, with her leaving office and, um, so we would make that recommendation to you.
Okay, you heard the, uh, recommendation, entertain a motion to approve the audit. Okay, is there a second and a second? All those in favors, raise your right hand. Okay. Uh, you want to go to the next one on the FEMA Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program Memorandum of Understanding?
All right. No, sir, because you haven't. You've put that off. Sir? Yeah, it's actually, it would be based off qualifications, um, so the, the board has the opportunity to set that, but we would, we would probably need to review that, uh, which we did on this one. We had the HR director review it and make a recommendation, um, so we, we would need to get that permit. So the, um, the FEMA Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program, we've got a new MOU, um, generally the same, you've had these before. Um, this is the MOU, project number 4390050-R. It elevates 32 residential structures across the county in various locations. Um, as you'll recall, there's no county money associated with this. Um, we've engaged the Mids Commission to handle, um, the administrative work for us on our behalf and that is reimbursed through the FEMA grant. So we would recommend that you approve and authorize the finance director to decide, to sign the attached state-centric MOU number 43930050-R for the HMGP reelevations related to Hurricane Florence and approve the attached budget amendment adding this project.
You heard the, uh, recommendation?
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Add a second question. Yes, sir. Are we going to be taking title to any properties that we clear the buildings off of and we wind up owning it forever?
So these are all elevation projects. Any acquisition projects, you are required, but as you'll recall in our last conversation when we brought the ones that were in Washington, the city of Washington, where the, if they're located in a municipality, the municipality is going to take control of those properties and look after them. If they're in the county, we'll be required to, but if they're out in the county, the grass is going to grow up, so.
But, but on this deal, there's nothing in there that we would be taking title to?
No, so these are all elevation projects.
All right, because I'm not voting for anything that we take the land out of circulation for it. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. Uh, Brian, you want to go to In God We Trust signage?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, as you recall, at your regular meeting on September the 6th, you unanimously voted to install the words In God We Trust in the Commissioner's bedroom and on the courthouse. Um, since that meeting, we've received samples of the acrylic letters, um, and, and looked at those and looked at the original placement of the lettering. Based on those color samples and, um, and, and relevance, uh, due to the wording In God We Trust, um, we're requesting, staff is requesting that the board reconsider amending the locations in the, in the meeting room and put it above the dais, above the seal instead of down here below, um, and, and use, um, this gold color which, which ties in based on, we've, we've held it up there, looking at this color. They actually sent us three. Those really don't do justice to it. This one, when you put it up there, based on the lighting, it, it ties into the seal. Um, so it would put In God We Trust at, at the highest point in the, in the room, which is, which is where it probably should be, um, due to the significance of that. And also, uh, we would recommend that you change from, um, where you, where you wanted to put it on the brick underneath the courthouse lettering. to put it on the brick underneath the courthouse lettering to above the, to above the door frame, uh, and do that in a black aluminum. And that was what their original option one was. And it does, it puts God above folks that are walking into that courthouse, not below where you're walking over top of it. So, uh, for that, for that, for that reason, we would, we would request that you consider amending those locations, um, and, and, and making it gold acrylic in here and, um, black aluminum in, in the other location.
Is option one in option one?
It, it, if you look on page two ninety, it shows, uh, option one that he just discussed. Location.
Those are very reasons, and I'll make a motion to accept.
All right, got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're gonna take a break and we'll be back in fifteen minutes. Uh, Brian, have you heard anything from Dr. Cheeseman?
I have not, but.
Okay, we're coming back from our break. Uh, at this time, we'll recognize, uh, Dr. Cheeseman. You're right on time, seven fifteen.
Well, thank you very much for the flexibility. I truly appreciate it. Bover County Board of Education is looking at an unfortunate circumstance that happened almost twenty years ago. Grade five at Chaco Winnie Primary School burned down, is my understanding. And so for a long period of time, we've looked to try to bring grade five back. What really that looks like is at the end of a school year, if you're not really transitioning students back to a building, your fourth graders would just stay at Chaco Winnie Primary School and become fifth graders. So in short, with the General Assembly earmarking $300,000 last year and in this fiscal year $500,000, of that $800,000 seeking approval to come through the county commission to the Board of Education would provide us an opportunity to apply for consideration of reestablishing classroom units, um, in the back of the school where a current modular is. And so that modular specifically, um, has depreciated over time. Uh, we've already knocked down one because of how dilapidated it's been, um, but the current modular of classrooms is not conducive to student learning. They actually utilize that space, uh, really for storage offices, whatever it might be. So when you're looking at it, you currently have ninety-nine grade four students who will transition into grade five for next school year. Placing a four-room or six-room modular with a bathroom back there would allow us a little bit more flexibility. The opportunity to do this would also allow us to utilize four classrooms in the brick and mortar building that are currently used for labs and other opportunities to push out into those modulators so our grade five students would actually be able to stay in the brick and mortar, brick and mortar building. So in the application, it typically cites that they really don't want to have modulators put down, but since there, this would be replacing a pre-existing. Also, the town of Chaco Winnie has put it in writing to us that they would allow this to happen as the original permit for April second of two thousand and two was granted. Um, so they would allow us to basically put the structure where it is now. The current structure and the future structure is actually in a place where you already have water lines existing, electric lines existing. We don't really see a huge issue with that. Um, already has septic in the area. We're fine in that regard. So we would do, uh, surface level construction to the pad underneath once we decompose or deconstruct the other modular that's there, um, but this project would not exceed eight hundred thousand. And so we're really asking for your approval to file the application to see if the state would then approve it.
And if I understand it correctly, it's the $300,000 that's allocated plus the next year was five hundred thousand.
Right, so in combination, we would use that money. And typically, Chairman, it's, um, when you're looking at a four versus a six, you're looking at five hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand in that ballpark for project.
Are you talking about, uh, putting modulators back there or are you talking about building something permanent?
No, it would be a modular classroom unit. It could be a four or it could be a six. And so it's an upgrade from what used to be there. It's not brick and mortar, but we can actually surround the base with brick. We could do that detail ourselves to make it look a little bit more permanent than it is. And we're asking the state to consider that since they approved the initial rounds, you know, twenty years ago under emergency, and so we're asking them to consider it in this regard.
Are we gonna own this or is this a financing deal of some kind?
No, it would be a straight-out payment. So the $800,000 would be the amount of money that would cover this project in totality, meaning we would not exceed eight hundred thousand. There is no financing to this. Um, the board is well aware that if this project for some reason all of a sudden exceeded eight hundred thousand, we would halt. And our goal is to, hopefully the state approves it and have it in place by August eleventh, which puts you two weeks out before students would come back. Um, but in short, no, you're not financing it. It's, it's based off of the eight hundred thousand that's already set aside.
Just two questions.
Sure.
Um, you, you're talking about August eleventh of this coming?
Yes, sir.
Because, because a part of that two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three funding won't come in until after that.
It is, I thought twenty, it's twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three.
The eight hundred thou, or the five hundred thousand's twenty-two, twenty-three.
How does it cycle down?
But anyways, we, that could get worked out, but.
Yeah, I think I could use local and switch over.
Okay.
I could check.
Can you explain to the, to the public the advantages to the schools?
Oh, a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So thanks for bringing that up. So when you look at accountability model, and there's been a lot of conversations coming out of COVID of where we sit with low performance, all right? So when you look at Chaco Winnie Primary, they are a, essentially a pre-K four school. And Chaco Winnie Primary is only one of two, maybe one of three in the state that exist in that matter. And they actually had great growth. They're a B school in the current, B is a bog school in the current accountability model. But when we also looked at, what does it look like for a five-eight school? Well, Chaco Winnie Middle School is one of thirty-three schools in the state of North Carolina, and very few of those models have actually worked coming through the pandemic. As a matter of fact, of the thirty-three, I'd be a, a safe bet, the twenty-five of them had a D or an F, all right? And so a few of them had Cs. So in short, the educational opportunity for fifth graders, they are truly of the mindset of elementary. So therefore you should put them back with elementary. You should have put them back with elementary teachers, elementary students, elementary play. Whereas when you take them to the middle school level and put them in a six-eight school, you somewhat landlock yourself in terms of who can teach them based off of their credential, how their schedule looks like based off of academic interventions. So Chaco Winnie Primary, as it exists right now, is, you know, getting back to that original design of what research says would be good for a fifth grader, um, fifth grade. Yep.
Other questions?
Nice part about it is it would give your Chaco Winnie Middle School a six-eight model that would align to a P.S. Jones six-eight model so we could build better together.
Yes. Go ahead.
I, I understand what you're doing, but you're saying that Chaco Winnie had already updated their, um, plans that you could put, the wires and everything have been approved?
So, I'm sorry, sir. At Chaco Winnie Primary School, um, groundwater already exists, it sits right there. Electrical already exists because it's already coming into the current unit, meaning I don't have to do any other type of work on that. Uh, the foundation will do repairs to as we take the other unit off of it. The only additional cost that might come in that is covered by the eight hundred thousand would be for security alarms, intercom alarms, Wi-Fi coming in, but we believe that we're set to go.
I understand that part, but Chaco Winnie have already approved the units and stuff, going back is the word.
Yeah, so according to Mr. Buck, uh, the original issuance of the permit was April second.
Okay.
And it says after discussion with mayor and town staff, the town acknowledges and will allow the request.
So you're just ready to go?
Yeah.
I'm gonna proceed.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, my item, I'm gonna move to the last under the commissioner's comments. Too many comments. Uh, so John, we're down to.
Whoa, whoa, Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes.
Does that mean that the rest of the commissioners are gonna have an opportunity to comment on this or are you forced, trying to force me on an item?
You can do it in, you, two minutes. I mean, anybody can speak.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not kosher, Mr. Chairman. This is an agenda item and you need to vote of the board in order to do that.
I mean, it's my agenda item.
You need to vote of the board in order to change the agenda.
The agenda about food.
Yeah.
But if you want to change.
Okay, well, well, y'all can vote to change. Okay, but, but he's not king. Okay, we'll just, we'll go ahead and stick with it. Let's see. Okay, all right, all those in favor of, uh.
Whoa, what are we voting on?
Change it and move it down to the commissioner's comments. Okay, I'll make a motion that we move it to commissioner's comments. Two minutes.
Two seconds.
Okay, all those in favor say, I mean, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Which way did you vote, John?
I voted for.
To move it. Okay. Okay. All right.
I don't think it's actionable at that point.
Pardon?
I don't think it's actionable.
Oh, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking for action.
Well, you were.
No, 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 I was not asking for that.
We're leaving an apology, the apology doesn't mean anything.
Okay, John, John, you're down to affordable housing. That's on two ninety-five.
I think most of us that have gone around and talked to businesses, talked to the school district, um, in fact, I should have asked Dr. Cheeseman this when he was here, but have heard about the problems that businesses have attracting people to come to work, the problems that the school district has attracting teachers, the problems that the hospital has getting nurses. One of the big issues in, has been housing, availability of housing that matches the scale or the price range that workers are in. Um, I don't know what the solution is. I know that the city is also looking at it. It was in, it was in their extended plan that they just went through. Um, and I don't know what the solution is, but I think we owe our constituents some, a, a, a look at this as to what could be done. I'm not talking about spending money, but a look at what this could be done to solve this problem and provide reso, not resources, but provide opportunities for developers to come in and solve a problem for us and, and fix the needs that new employees have, fix the needs that nurses have, teachers and all the other around. What was the term you used? Workforce housing, workforce housing. Um, and I don't know, again, I don't know what the solution is. I just know that there's this, there's this huge need out there that prevents businesses from growing and prevents people getting, I mean, for example, he's got two of his top people in the, in the school district live in Greenville and commute over every day. So, and the reason is they can't find a place to go. And, and the teachers, the new teachers, they got eighty new teachers on staff, am I right? Eighty. Eighty new that haven't really been in a classroom before. They're brand new. Uh, they'll come here, but they're living in Greenville. And what they'll do is work for two years and then move back to Greenville. Uh, we need to lock them down here and be able to have accommodations for them to live in. So what my suggestion is, my request is that we form a, just a task force that would get the stakeholders together, uh, to sit down and talk about where you would go to try to solve the problem.
Brian, was this, did this not make the top three on our teaching plan? I'm trying to remember.
I'm not sure exactly where it ended up. There was some conversation.
It, it was in there, but I can't remember if it was the top.
I think they said that the county didn't want to give real estate deals or something.
Yeah, I'm not talking about being in the business.
I mean, that's what.
Yeah, I understand that.
Well, I think the city has assisted, um, their growth with streamlining, how people building permits and all of that, they've gone in and streamlined it. It must have worked. I don't know if it had anything to do with it, but they got four hundred and fifty units that they're gonna be building, uh, soon. And so I don't know if that had anything to do with it, but that's exactly what we could do. Instead of getting the real estate business, just figure out what, what the roadblocks that are out there and try to get them, uh, around it.
Yeah, the people I've talked to indicate that developers don't even know about us, don't know about the natural resources we have and the, uh, the quality of life we have. They're not paying any attention to us.
I'll be glad if there's a, um, task force.
Can I talk?
Yes.
All right, because I'm gonna ask for permission to talk. Uh, you're talking about stakeholders. I have no idea who they would be, the stakeholders. Uh, I can, I think you have your cities that have utilities and, and they have the wherewithal to, um, influence development. The county has limited options in that regard. Now, Randy hit on something I was gonna mention. You streamline, uh, permits. Well, for, for the county, you can't streamline a, a, a septic permit. I mean, you're gonna have to meet state criteria and there's only one day that's worse than not getting a permit, and that's when your septic system fails. So you, that, that's, that's not gonna be able to help that. Now, what you, you could do, you could cut the permitting fee, cut it in half, maybe cut it all together. There's things you can do in that regard, but it's gonna cost you lost revenue. Uh, maybe you could streamline the planning, uh, phase or have offer through the planning department ways to assist the developer in navigating through, uh, some of the, uh, larger regulations that are gonna come down from the state and federal agencies once you get into a fairly decent-sized development. I mean, there's a lot of things you could do, but then you gotta ask yourself, do you have the, the organization to be able to do that and do it effectively? And, and again, now we're starting to get back into the real estate business. Uh, you said something about people don't know about us. Well, that's your economic developer's job, and it has been for a long time to let people know about us. And, uh, yeah, I agree, that, that we've been lacking in economic development in this county for a long time. So, uh, I, I think you've got, you've got a Gordian knot, and if you're gonna unravel that, you're gonna have it without spending any money. And I, I agree with not spending money, maybe a little bit here and there to, 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 uh, agrees the skid, so to speak, to help developers do better. But, um, the things we need to do in, at the county level is to incite people to come here because this is a wonderful place to live. Just telling people it's a wonderful place to live ain't gonna get it. I mean, there's a whole, this is a pretty complex situation. Now, I, one, one more thing. I, I feel that people are gonna come here and the market will probably take care of itself because blue states are imploding and they got nowhere else to go. And when they come here, if we're not the right type of state and the right type of county, we can forget it. They'll move to South Carolina, they'll move to Florida, they'll go to Texas. And that's the way it's gonna be going forward, I think, for a long time to come.
Okay, uh, Brian, did you, did you have something to say?
So just a couple of observations. Um, we've had some conversations with, uh, with a new developer in town through our economic development. Um, economic development is not, um, we don't focus economic development on housing. That's not what economic development is focused on. Economic development is, is helping our existing industries and recruiting new businesses. Um, but we had a conversation recently with a developer, um, and, and what you're talking about is workforce affordable housing. The four hundred lot subdivision that the city's talked about, my understanding is north of three hundred thousand. That's not affordable for workforce housing. The conversation we had with this developer, it's what they do, they have a model that they're working on. He said that right now because of supply chain issues, cost of material, those kind of things, it's twelve hundred dollars right now for them to build a one-bedroom and rent it. It's twelve hundred dollars a month. And, and that's as tight as they can get it. Of course, they've gotta be able to make a little bit of a profit because they gotta stay in business too. But they're working on a model, we're continuing to have those conversations with them about a model that would work for workforce development housing. Um, so I would, I would ask you to give us a little grace on that.
There are some opportunities that, granted, cities have a little better opportunity of that than counties do, but there are opportunities. If you wanted, I mean, you could take ARPA money, and you could go into a deal with a developer, you could buy them, I mean, anything that you can do to help drive the price down is what they need, and you got to have an agreement with them that they'll pass that along to their folks. I mean, so there are opportunities. If you make that policy decision, you want to do that. They're not as strong for counties as they are for cities because there's a lot more of that. It's easier to do stuff in the cities. But like I say, we're continuing to have those conversations. It is something that is recognized very clearly. I think the developers recognize that. They're just trying to figure out a way to make it affordable. But right now, it's extremely unaffordable simply because of the cost. We, you know, we are a waterfront community, and that drives real estate prices way up, and people are willing to pay that. So, supply and demand and market, I mean, look at what houses are selling for right now in Beaufort County. People would love to come here and live, but they can't afford to right now. So, we've got to figure out a way to do that, and I think we can. It's going to take some time. And, you know, let us continue to work that with one of the developers on the model they're working on because they've said that they've done that in other places. I mean, if the board wants to jump in it, we can certainly give you some direction to jump into it. But I think the issue is clear to everybody involved that there's a concern there.
Well, just have economic development agreeing that that's the situation is a step in the right direction. Is just let them be in their bag of tricks to say, we've got to look at that, and if somebody comes along, just to have a flow chart to say, you need to do this, you need to do this, you need to do this, and I'm here to answer any questions if there is any.
Yeah, so to address that, we do, we have a good process through our situation. We do have a flow chart. We've been through all that. We have that line now. And when we have someone come in, we pull them into a meeting, and we bring all the players to the table so they don't have to come back time after time after time. We don't send them running around. We bring all of our people to the developer or to the business owner so that they meet with us one time, and everybody's at the table. So, I think our process, we're always willing to look at different processes and try to improve that, but I think we have a really good process. Our developer review committee works really, really well to streamline that as best we can, you know, unless you, and I don't think that, you know, that cutting prices on your development fees are going to help you at all with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All right. First, I think we should direct, as Commissioner Walker said, I think we should direct economic development to put a little more focus on real estate development, low income, not low income housing per se, but in affordable housing. With the same token, as someone who provides development services of every kind you can think of in about 10 counties at different times here in eastern North Carolina, I can tell you, Beaufort County has the most efficient process with less paperwork and less BS of any county that I know of. I don't care where it is. We are very good at what we're doing now, and it's working. We have good people in the two key positions, and they're doing fantastic jobs, and that's building inspections, and that's the health department, environmental health. So, we, you know, there are no complaints there. If you want to see yourself go into misery, and I tell my clients when they come in, this is going to be nothing but misery before it's over, go to Pitt County. Now, you can sit here and say Pitt County's growing and all that kind of stuff is going on. Go over there and try to do something. You will see more bureaucrats than you thought that were alive on the face of the earth, and you will hear about new problems that you never had ever thought of before that will suddenly come looming at you. It is a horrible place to try to do business. So, Beaufort County is in a unique position. I think we are being punished by the economy, by the high prices, by the lack of labor, by the government paying people not to work, all of those sorts of things. But I, and to me, the only thing that we can do that might help us would be a little bit more focused, and I'm not talking about, I'm talking about 5% more maybe from economic development, into becoming more conscious of affordable housing. I don't want to make it into a big deal, but lowering fees won't help because our fees are already low. They are very low compared to what you have to do, you go to some other places to do some things. So, you know, it's, I appreciate your thought, John, but it's something that's only, it's a problem that only money can solve, and right now, the Fed is going against us, and money's not going to solve this problem anytime soon.
Go ahead, John.
I mean, I only brought this up because I'm hearing time and time again from everybody that this is hampering our constituents from doing better business than what they're doing right now in providing better services, such as the hospital in the school district. I think it's our obligation to take a look at this and to see what we can do to make it better for those people. I appreciate, Brian, that you got one developer, but there's got to be a lot more out there than that that are sort of into the business, and I think we need to go spread our wings, find out what other nets we can cast out there and catch. That's all I'm talking about.
Yeah, my opinion is this. If we're going to go down this road and open up this door, I think it's very important that we open it up to everyone in the county, not one developer, somebody from outside, somebody with deep pockets. There's people here that already own land, and they know what they've got, and they themselves could be developers. But if you say, oh, we're only going to go with these guys from out of town, we're going to figure out a way to get them some money and make it work for them, you're going to have some problems going forward. It will metastasize into government favoritism, and then it's, people are going to call it socialism, and socialism isn't going to work going forward in America. I think our socialist days are pretty much over. And then there's another thing. I mean, we've got an election happening tomorrow, and I think you're going to see some big changes coming out of Washington, D.C., a whole lot of big changes. Oh, I think it's going to help the entire nation eventually. So, supply chain issues are going to probably start drying up, and there's going to be some money drying up, too, which is causing the problem to begin with, all this money floating around, too much money chasing too few goods, paying people not to work.
Yeah, okay. I just came from a meeting last week in which I probably spread COVID, but besides that, they're forecasting that we're going to lose another 4,000 people out of Beaufort County in the next 10 to 15 years. They're just going to leave. And part of that is the jobs, part of it is all of the other things that we're talking about right now. So, I think we got to start looking at what we could do to keep those people here and stem that tide.
Okay, do you? So, we're not going to do a task force tonight? We're just going to talk that? Okay. All right. I heard we're down to your items. You want to pluck them off?
The rest are dead, you can throw out. We've already done that. This Vida emergency room report, I mean, I'm a little bit chagrined that we got a one-page letter from the PR director at the hospital. I mean, the reports that I am getting run something like this. Someone spent five hours in the emergency room, they didn't get the attention they needed, they eventually died as a result of not getting the emergency room attention. I'm getting, thank you. I'm getting reports very similar to that about long delays. And, you know, I really think that the hospital should show us enough respect, send somebody over here, and let us at least talk to them. For instance, for instance, what kind of triage do they do when people come into the hospital? Because if you have people that are serious enough sick to die as a result of not getting emergency room services, you know, triage should pick up on the emergency cases and get them all in there. What are they doing here? Again, I'm minorly insulted that the hospital is brushing us off with this. This is the same hospital that went far out of their way to shut down a hospital in Bellhaven that was handling 5,000 emergency cases a year, and then so that they could have control of all of the emergency services in Beaufort County, and now they're not providing the emergency services. I'd like to be able to ask them, why don't you reopen your emergency center in Bellhaven so you can take some of these cases down there? Because I know for a fact, before they closed it, we had people within 10 miles of Washington that were going to Bellhaven to use the services down there because they knew they could get in and be seen rather than coming to Beaufort Hospital. This is a serious issue, and I just, I would say to Vida, you need to get yourself in here, and let's take a look at this, or we're going to pull out our lease agreement, and we're going to start looking at it. So, you need to get in here.
Let me say this. We will meet on Wednesday, and I will voice your concerns with them, and I'm sure they can send somebody out next month. But my mother has been in that hospital a number of weekends, and yes, this past weekend when she went, I mean, that thing was pretty much at capacity. I mean, there was really nowhere to put anybody in order to get anybody else in. Somebody had to be discharged, and that is part of the problem. I'm not sure that's all of the problem, but I will make your concerns known to them on Wednesday when we meet.
Well, I go through, by the emergency room three or four times a day, and maybe, well, at least two times a day and maybe three or four, and I keep an eye on their parking lot to see sort of what's going on, and it's usually pretty full.
I was a commissioner when the county got themselves in a position where they allocated all these resources to Vida rather than have a better paying lease with the community health system. And all I kept hearing from the Chamber of Commerce and others, they're nonprofit, they're nonprofit, they're not going to leave us in the lurch. Well, same thing, I think, was all down about Bellhaven. They're nonprofit, they're nonprofit, everything's going to be better now. Well, guess what? It didn't turn out to be better. It's gotten worse, and I would argue that Beaufort County is at least out of $60 million worth of property, taxpayer property. So, yeah, they need to come in and talk to us. I mean, it may be we don't have any options at this point because of the community kind of sold us down the, at that time, that was about 2012, sold us down the river. Chamber of Commerce really had a big hand in all that, and I don't appreciate it, but it happened. And if we've got any options, great. But our community hospital isn't as wonderful as it should be. I go to Greenville, I use Vida in Greenville, and I get a whole lot better service and for less money. So, it's not that long of a trip. I just try to stay healthy so I don't have to make any, get taken over in a wagon.
Okay. Jail committee update.
Well, I guess the question to the jail committee is, what are you guys doing?
We haven't had a meeting in two months. We are in the process of going through. We've got a letter over to the clerk of the court asking what restrictions would be put on construction, if any, by the courts. We're waiting for that to come back, and then we'll sort through the different options, including the option to do nothing, and then make a recommendation to the board. Well, we're collecting, we still got, we still got, when we get into any form of construction, we've got ancillary costs that are associated with that, and we're trying to make sure we get that paid out.
Okay, you still got the $2 million bill out of the basement to keep us going for the basic quarter 50 years.
That's option two.
Thank you.
Jail population.
Well, I just want to keep the heat on the jail population and using ankle bracelets because I think they can be used more than what we're using, and that's all I have is a comment on that to the people that are in charge, unless somebody else has something they want something. But the big item that I have on here is the next item, which is combating drug use in Beaufort County. Now, the last time I made a motion to do some things to combat drug use, you guys voted down because you spent most of your time talking about the poor people that were using drugs and what would happen to them. And I'm not talking about drug users, I'm talking about people that are selling drugs for money. That's where the. Choke point is on this, and you guys didn't want to do anything about it. So, the fact that you voted the motion down, what I'm asking you this month is, what do you want to do about drugs in Beaufort County? You want to keep defending drug dealers and drug users, or you want to put a stop to this?
We never voted to do that to begin with, to defend them.
Well, if you're not doing anything about it, you're helping them.
I'll tell you right now, my position hasn't changed. I will not sit here and vote to give somebody 20 years for using marijuana. I will not do it.
Well, tell us what you will vote for.
Well, I vote for let the people do their job that's getting paid to do it.
That's not working.
Well, it's not working, so we are not working.
That's not working.
So, I mean, well, I don't vote against it, and if they don't vote against, I don't vote.
Well, then, you need to drop out of the process and let those of us that want to lock them up for 20 years proceed.
Well, you need, what you need to do is go ahead on and get your badge and lock them up, because I don't think nobody up here want to knock nobody up 20 years for one piece of marijuana.
Selling it, I'm talking about selling.
I don't care to sell a truckload 20 years, ain't worth it, when you can kill somebody and don't get but 10. So, I'm not going to vote for it today, next week, and not long as I'm sitting here.
You guys do realize you're de facto drug supporters when we take this route, that we're not going to do anything?
I'm a de facto drug supporter when I take an aspirin.
I prefer letting the new sheriff, let's see what skills they got. We going to get one?
Well, I don't really think you're going to see enough to make a difference, so we're talking, I'm talking about a state, us lobbying statewide. Beaufort County is not going to do very much by ourselves.
Well, we're all going up there next week.
No, I'm not going.
Well, if you want to lobby the state, why aren't you going?
It's the most wasted trip that you make.
Oh, I see.
I've been there.
Okay.
I've been there.
Okay, why don't you go to illegal immigrants in Beaufort County?
Illegal immigrants in Beaufort County, you know, what are we going to do about illegal immigrants coming into Beaufort County? What Biden is doing is shipping them to nonprofits in Greenville, and those nonprofits are putting them into this county. Just this last week, a contractor told me, he said, who had been doing business in Florida and came up here, he said, look, he said, I have got some incredibly low prices for framing. He said, they are astronomically low. And I looked at him and said, they're working illegals. They pay them $3 an hour, they'll take whatever they can get to get their feet on the ground in the United States, and that is what's going on. So, we need to get involved in the illegal situation, and illegals coming into Beaufort County. So, does anybody have any comments about doing anything about that, or are we going to keep supporting them?
If they're coming in contact with law enforcement, law enforcement has already said that they'll turn them over to ICE, right?
But ICE, you know, if you look at the policies of ICE, I've seen ICE won't even come and get them. They have to have a criminal charge against them. I'm talking about a criminal charge different from being an illegal alien to get ICE to even touch them.
No, we're going to put them on planes and fly them someplace.
And sell them back. Five years, six years ago, we had 400 kids in the primary school that needed speech assistance because of language, not because they were handicapped, it was because they couldn't speak English. You know, this is still going on today. We're still financing this, the public is still supporting this. We need to start taking some action.
It's three minutes, three minutes max.
It's an esoteric issue, and it's going to take governments like ourselves to advocate and try to work with the new federal government that's going to be partly in place and ask them to do their jobs. And I think you're going to see a willingness from the federal government next month, the month following, to start doing whatever it takes to get the federal government to do their job. Now, there are laws on the books that says this and that has to be done, and the executive is not doing it. The executive is charged with enforcing the law. That's just the way it is, the way it is in Beaufort County. The sheriff is the executive. He's charged with enforcing the laws of the state. And we're going to see some things change, but we're going to have to advocate for it, or it's going to fall apart. Politically, it'll fall apart. It'll be, oh, look at these poor people, it's so sad, so sad. Then we get another 4 million people in this country in a year and a half. That's how many we've gotten in the last year now, 4 million people here illegally. It's a record. So, it's an esoteric issue, but if we don't address it at the local level, it will never work at the federal level on a long. work at the federal level on a long-term basis because people forget how bad it got. And I don't think we got a whole lot more years, not just this issue, a whole lot of issues.
Okay, we're down to the commissioner's comments, so let me get my time here. Okay, as many of you know, there's a lot of banners around Beaufort County that says that I voted to pay free college tuition for illegal immigrants. In August, we received the Beaufort Promise Scholarship Program Guidelines and that was presented by Brian and number six in that guidelines says, in order to receive funding for Beaufort County through funds allocated for subsidizing the Beaufort Promise Scholarship, students must be a United States citizen and must prove residency in Beaufort County. So I would personally like to apologize for the misinformation that sat there all over Beaufort County on signs, political signs put out by a political PAC. Any other commissioner?
Yeah, I will, to do two minutes.
Okay.
Well, this illegal immigrants thing, you know, those signs do accuse the chairman of doing this, but what he, was what he didn't do that counts. He had an opportunity to put a stop to this, to have a vote to stop it and every time he voted in such a way that it allowed for illegals to get benefits from the community college. And the piece of paper that's in here that was put in this agenda item before it was moved, in the first paragraph specifically says-
That all citizens, all persons in the county, it deliberately, deliberately does not say citizens, would receive benefits and the chairman of the board of the college says he has alternate funds from grants and donors that allow him to make sure that everybody gets aid. So it was a default, Mr. Chairman, you didn't act when you could have acted.
Okay. Enter, you want two? All right.
Recently, I was interested in signing up for community college classes for drone pilot's license. I want to do that. And I was impressed with the process that you go through. It's clearly, I don't know, you should try to sign up for classes because it's clearly in there. You can't be illegal alien and sign up for classes, you just can't do it. So they stop you at the border, you know, when you're trying to, I mean, when you're trying to sign up for this stuff. And I was trying and I noticed that, so, I mean, tell me I'm wrong.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, no, I can't speak.
Okay.
Okay, so this is another time issue. We're talking about August when miraculously guidelines come down from the community college. The budget was in May, in June, that's when the vote occurred. So saying, well, we've got some new guidelines from the community college and it speaks to what you voted on in June, while we didn't know what those guidelines were in June, they probably were written sometime after June to resolve whatever mess they think occurred. Again, whatever's on banners is the news that was important to the people of Beaufort County during the budget. The budget is when we allocate money and from that we do oversight and from that we organize policy to spend the money. Now, I remember having a discussion with President Loopy about illegals being able to use the community college and then we got into what would Thomas Jefferson do? And his thing was Thomas Jefferson would have allowed such and my thing was at that time, Thomas Jefferson didn't know anything about illegals and they didn't have free public education. Now, all this is on camera. I mean, that's why we do, we have transparency, we have cameras. The vote was on camera. Commissioner Booth, you said to the chairman, oh, you know you don't feel that way. I remember you saying that. You said that you wanted to fund illegals and then you all voted together at the same time. That is what is real, that's what is shown. This is why we have these cameras, so the public will see what is real, not the shell game two months later. Now, that's what we got going on right here. Now, if you say this is misinformation, I think you need to get a crystal ball that tells you the truth because right now you are looking at a bold-faced lie.
Did you want two minutes?
No, no, I said it, did it, I said it now, yes. I am not going to deny, you're not going to bully me into denying it.
No, I don't want you to deny. I want you to tell me.
You're out of order, you are out of order.
I appreciate you telling the truth.
You're out of order, okay. Got a motion at a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand.